First item on our agenda is water rate increase. We've been, of course, monitoring all of our departments, particularly the water department. We have transferred about 70,000, I need to probably give a closer figure, to the water department for their operating expenses. That does not count the bond issue. And we propose a 10% increase, which will be about $2 a month. This will enable the water department to operate separate of the bond payment. And I'd like to call on Rodney, if he would, to give us a little more detail about our expenses. And our expenses have increased, I think, what was it, seven years ago? Did we have a rate increase? Kind of over this week a little bit. I went back and did it for the past five years to see what revenue was, what the expense was. Like you said, it's been seven years since we did an acreage, but I went back for five years. And as you can see, there's, we've actually lost a little bit in revenue from 2006 to 2010. That's kind of tough to explain. I mean, all we can say is we haven't sold as much water as we did back then in 2006. That's probably due to some closings of different places, but that's about the only way I can explain it. But we have had a pretty big decrease in total revenue. And on the other hand, on the expense part, we've had a little over 30% increase in expenses. And that's kind of tough to swallow somehow. And I did just on the bond payment on this side, on the right-hand side, just, those figures are not 100% accurate. I just kind of went by the schedule of what we were supposed to pay of each month for a 12-month period for each year. As you can see, from the revenue of 2010 to the expense of 2010, it looks like we're doing okay as far as meeting our expenses without the bond payment. The bond payment's what really hurts us. I mean, what we know we have to pay, that comes off the top every month. And I even went a step further, of course, doing research. I told a chemical company to buy from, got them to do me a spreadsheet of like five years on chemicals. And that's where a big percent of came in. It was almost 47% increase in five years on chemicals. Of course, that's something we cannot control. But in the classes I have been to, everybody has told me, you know, the best way to handle rate increases is to get where you need to be and then go up one or two percent a year, per year, and it don't hurt the customer, it's bad. But the key part is getting to where you need to be. I know a 10% increase would help tremendously. But still, that would still be a little shy where you need to be, but it will help out tremendously. Are there any questions?
Did we used to sell water to Dewan?
Yes, we sell water to Dewan and Marion County. That's whole state.
Rodney, in the sheet that you handed out, the bond payment figure is not in the operating expense figure. If you're looking at that, you add the bond payment expense into the operating expense. So actually, this year, to clear up, if you might not have understood, I have a hard time understanding sometimes, last year, 2010, we just barely broke even. We had about 35,000 over revenue and operating expense, and then we had to come up with 655,000 or 620,000 and make the bond payment. The city had to chunk that in. They made almost 100% of the bond payment last year. And already, year-to-date, we've already put in 75,000 excluding the bond payment. So you're not even going to break even this year. You're going to be way under with what your revenues are versus what your expenses are. And that's not counting the bond payment. The bond payment's on top of that. And if you'll go back to 2006 and you look at the revenue, a million 741, and expenses a million 262, we didn't like a lot. We didn't have to chunk in a lot that year to help make the bond payment because we had, I think it's 479,000 left from the revenues, less expenses, to go toward the bond payment. So we only made up less than 200,000 that year. And we're going to make up post of, probably, we're going to make up the full bond payment this year plus 70, 70-something year-to-date to keep the operating.
So I understand, Rodney, that our expenses from '06 to '10 is 30%?
30% increase.
And so our 10% on our rate increase would help make up that 30%?
Okay.
Anyone else? Any comments?
On the bond issue, we're talking about the water plant.
And the sewage lines? Oh, I don't think, sewage plant, everything's in there.
How much longer does it going to take to get the plant paid off?
I think it pays off in 2018.
That's right.
About six years?
We're paying a total of 1.7 million each year on bond payments. And your bond payment is one of them. So we're really having to look at our expenses and then try to keep the business operating at the same time.
One thing on the expenses, after 2008, is when we started transferring all the payroll taxes over, we were not transferring everything over, remember? And that could be one.
The city was taking that as an expense and not charging it back.
Right. We're not getting all of it, but we are now.
Yeah, we've asked our accountant to break out all the particular expenses of each department. So that's how we found that, to look at it closer. Hey, Scott?
Got a lot of questions. I'm just trying to formulate a little bit.
Hey.
When will we start? Will this help any of us start settling the, when they put the U lines down, Ward Farm?
It will help some. He could probably tell you more about what the usage would be down through there than I could, of course, how much it's going to increase our use of our facility. Of course, it will help break down the pace, get the weapons center in. That will help us out tremendously.
A water increase is a necessary evil, I mean, on council. And we never done it in seven years. I'd like to do it, but I'm sure, I hope we're not pulled on it tonight, and I know I'm going to have some questions.
No.
If we don't, I'd like to at least another meeting.
No, we're going to do it next council meeting, give everybody time to think, get some feedback. Okay. Rodney, thank you very much for your report. Next item on the agenda is fees for dumping at the street department. We have this today. And spent $8,353 for providing our citizens with a dumpster. But as you can see, if things goes as it is now, we will have spent $17,000 by years in providing the dumpster. We feel like that we've got to recoup some of that cost, of course, everybody knows the budget's tight, the economy is down, but we have to recover as much money on the services we provide. And we are proposing the fees that the dumpster would be $5 for a pickup load, $10 for loads too large to fit in a pickup, and $15 for large load, like a 16-foot trailer and up. This would allow us to recruit, I don't know, we'd have to see how many people's coming, but we hope that will recruit a substantial amount of that expense in order to keep providing that service. Do I have any? And that fee, it'll be 5, 10, and 15. So we think that is a reasonable charge at the dumpster. And that's one day a week, which is on Friday. The dumpster's operated on Friday.
If you say those sizes again, I got pickup, a pickup truck.
Pickup load would be $5, $10 for load too large to fit in a pickup. And then $15 for large load.
Like a 16, you said 16?
Foot trailer.
Okay.
Do I have, oh, and we will not allow any more dumping by commercial business and/or contractors. And that's, you know, also, in addition, rental property owners, that like mobile home parks or houses that they have to rework when the tenant moves out, they'll need to have their own dumpster.
Will that include apartment complexes?
Well, yeah, for their, they need to have, most of them has their own dumpster, apartment complex. So they don't, they're bringing. Any comments by council?
We're already requiring people that are building houses or remodeling to have their dumpster, you know, so basically, like you say, if they're renting and having to clean out every so often, they don't make us, they're modeling.
Back.
Pickup load, I think the load is a lot of minutes.
Well, yeah, I mean some side loads. Okay. Paul? April?
I just know every month, a week, go through those bills. That's a lot of the money anyway.
Okay. Next item is pickup trash at residence. We're proposing to charge $15 to remove trash from residence, most of limbs, old appliance bedding, and that's per load. You will come in and pay you $15, and we'll issue an order to pick it up. Do I have any?
This is not made for trash. This is, this is limbs, plats, as you want to put on the side, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's got to be at the side of the road. Good point there. We're not going to go in the yard or behind the house. It's got to be the street. Any comments?
I think right now, we're picking up for free one time a year. And we're doing away with that, are we?
Every load will be, yeah.
You was two.
Uh, two.
Okay. Type three, a third.
Paul, you have it?
Here, we're going to start doing that right off, from the first, with the gravel truck, everything's on.
Well, that's, you're talking about amnesty or something, first. Any comment, suggestions on that?
I suggested that after we start for 30 days, people come and try to pick up stuff free to kind of just like roll it. But that's just a suggestion. I don't know what the council wants to do.
Well, I'd like to wait just some, and talk about it, I didn't know.
We can finalize that between now and next council meeting, hopefully have some further discussion. There no other discussion?
I think this is cheaper than what lots of others.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think Winfield's charge is 45 per load. So we're just trying to be reasonable.
You ever talked to anybody in Hightland? I know you was trying to get up with them.
Theirs was, I forgot the charge at the dumpster, but they were looking at him charging like we are on residential.
So it's 15 per load? Was that really the way it was?
15 per load at the residence.
Per trailer.
Yeah, per load, per time we go out. Each time we go out to the residence. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move to safe shelters on our roof. FEMA calls them safe rooms. And in light of the storms on April 27th, FEMA has a program that they'll pay 75% of the cost to construct safe rooms. And we've talked about maybe doing that, have one in at each of the three housing projects. One in Ragsdale, Keyspring, and at Westham. We're talking about working with the housing authority to share the cost. But what we want to do is to hear from the citizens of Hamilton, their opinion, and if they, and mostly we'd like to know if they're going to use a dumpster, I mean, excuse me, a safe room in the event a storm is approaching. Now, a lot of people did not go to a safe room. And we want to know how the citizens feel about us constructing safe rooms. Anyone? That 25, right now, our share would be 104. And housing authority would be 104.
Yeah, you sent in a notice of intent to FEMA that you were going to block her grant without authority.
Yeah, but we decided before we did that, we would see if there was a need before we did it. So that's what we're doing tonight, is trying to determine how great a need, how much response we get from the citizens.
Henshaw would be 104,000.
I don't know if everybody got a copy of this or not. I'm assuming they did. But according to what I have, Ragsdale, the one that is proposed at Ragsdale would accommodate 210 people, and the one at Westham would accommodate 130, and the one at Keyspring's 375, and that's a total of 715 people that could be accommodated by these safe rooms.
In other words, it would, the housing authority residents, the housing residents, and citizens that live in our individual residences. So we'd have three places for people to go to a shelter. If you calculated in the drive time from Westham to downtown, you'd probably get caught in a storm if it was occurring. Come in? Oh, did you bring some copies or pictures of something that's been built?
Yeah, I got one we did recently, in the last two, three years. You want to look at it?
Yeah, and that's why, I wish you could hold it up where the camera.
This is a standalone.
Get a picture of it?
We did for the city of Moulton. It wasn't tied in with the housing authority, a little bit larger scale, I think it held 400 people. You can use something to look at. Kind of give a little elevation view of your.
And this is at Moulton, did you say?
This is at Moulton. This actually got restrooms, a kitchen, a little bit larger scale than what you're talking about doing, same concept.
And it's above ground?
It's above ground structure.
Oh, is that being used for any other use other than storm?
No. It could be used.
Could you pay for senior center?
No, it could be used, it could be used in the event of a power outage, long-term power outage, as more of a safe shelter after the storm, could be used for that.
I mean, it's quite a.
Like, for instance, during this tornado, if we need a place to serve food for people that was displaced from the storm, we do that.
You wouldn't want to do any storage units, you wouldn't want to put any tables here or go and obstruct the floor. You have to have at least five square foot per person. That's where that number comes from that you're talking about. If you go in there and start putting tables and chairs and things, that's going to cut down on your square footage.
But if we had people displaced, and we could put up tables to feed and let people sleep over for 82?
Exactly. Yeah. And I recommend a generator at each site too, so you've got power after storm.
How long has this been constructed at Moulton?
It's been there about two years.
Oh, do they have good participation, or do you know?
I don't know how many numbers they have coming into it. They've only had it open for about a year now. It was a little delayed in opening.
That's really nice. Oh, I think that's my concern, is how much, how many people would go?
And what's the upkeep on it? What do you have to do?
A little concrete block building, four concrete floors, concrete top, membrane roof, so nothing to generate, you have to keep the generator working.
How about a structure like that, if it would have been in Happyburg, took a direct hit, like a lot of them is?
Designed in FEMA standards, so if FEMA's standing, FIP on that.
Did you have work up the house, speak yourself?
I think the architect of the housing authority did that. I have seen them.
I'm wondering if the cost would be in line with what that was.
Those are on, you work from 150 to 200 dollars per square foot. I don't know what kind of number you get from, on the house that's already structured. Probably around 185 square.
Well, the total estimated is 833,000 for the crew.
You don't have any square feet?
Yeah, I have to add it up.
That's how you'd make a good voting price.
Yeah, you could do that, as long as you keep it open.
9,425 square feet.
And 800,000 dollars total cost, so they're estimating a little less than 100 dollars per square foot.
Be counting in, I think, I think I got the zero of the wrong place.
More concrete, or what we did on Moulton was lay the 12-inch block and fill each cell full of concrete, and put rebar in each cell.
I was wrong. I thought I kind of got 650, 670, 3,400, I think that's where I think that's going to be.
Okay, so that's a little over 200 dollars per square foot. Yeah, that's more than line, you could probably sleep.
Can those buildings, I understand, can those buildings be used for anything?
As long as you don't store stuff in them. I mean, if you, like, damage in a voting district, and you can come in and vote in it, bring tables in when you voted, you probably want to clear that out after that.
Okay.
You wouldn't want people showing up to use it, it be full of tables or have stuff stored in it. Just stay in multiple places.
That's what I presume about, because if you have a storm, tornado come up rather suddenly, and then you have stuff in your dormitory or.
Yeah, I'd say as long as you cleared it out after you used it, it shouldn't be a problem. Or if you built it larger than what you did. If you did have a capacity for 200 people, and you built it large enough for 400 people, you could do some storage in there, store it out.
Okay, but we can, it can be used throughout the year for something, just don't leave it cluttered up.
That's right.
Any comments? Okay. Do you have a list of projects?
I do.
I'll go ahead and let you do that.
Oh, going back to the bird area, the county's installing, they're probably going to end up with about 100 customers on those first days. So revenue to you at your wholesale rate's going to be about 900 dollars a month if all 100 customers took it up. So once the weapons center comes online, that'll increase dramatically. And they asked us to look at all the projects and kind of give you an update on where we're at, cause why not so much more local funds you've got committed on each project. I've listed the five projects that I know about, and then you said there were six or another.
I'm just trying to my head, probably just five.
Yeah, there might be something else I had.
You go over them, if there's another one, I'll probably remember between.
Okay. We'll just go through these one at a time. I've got a copy. The I-22, Dr. Park Landscaping, that's for sign, you had some USDA completed, the water surfacing we did, about 107,000. We did a contract for the sign landscaping, that contract was 72, 850, 849. There's been some change orders and the engineering fees. Total project cost right now is 91,889, and to date, 56,723 has been paid out, so we've got remaining about 35,166. I shoved local funds to zero, that's really, they are your funds, you've got to pay the 35,000, but they're coming out of that 107,000 potentially funds. There's no more supplement funds required. Canada 25, Waterline, you received a special appropriation from Senator Bexler for 25,000 that was applied to that project. Contract's a little over 50,000, engineering total project, around 57,000. You've paid out about 37,000 so far, so you've used all of that 25,000 on a grant you got. So your remaining local fund is going to be around 21,275 that you'll have remaining to pay, just from local funds. You also received another adapted grant, additional to the grant was $50,000, and it was prorated 12%, so your prorated amount now is 44,000. We did a contract on that, let bids, that contract was awarded to Jody Green Excavating, 36,248. Add engineering, total contract around 42,000. You've got about 38,000 remaining. The grant, 44,000, will cover all of that project, assuming there's no change orders, nothing added to the project. That grant's going to come to you quarterly payments, 11,000 dollar quarterly payments. I don't know if you've got the person yet or not, Jan. But if there is another appropriation by the state before they pay you, that amount could be reduced. They'll pay you each quarter, and if there's a appropriation during that time, you may not get the full 44,000. Hopefully, there won't be another appropriation. But there are enough funds in that project to cover that. We did, as a part of that project, we also looked at Century Road, a water line upgrade that Rodney asked us to look at. It was bid, but it came in above 44,000. I think you just awarded the 278 part of that.
Okay, we delayed that Century Road.
Yeah, that's right.
Later date.
That's right. All right, ADA Restrooms at the Rec Center, you received an RC&amp;D grant for 13,384.61. We bid that project and dimaxed the contract and got the bid at 18,900. Total project on that's around 23,000. So remaining to be paid is 20,400. You'll, on this grant, this RC&amp;D, you'll have to pay 100% of the cost, and then you'll be reimbursed for 13,384.61. So total local funds on that project's going to be around 10,015.39. And then the final project is the second, third, every sewer project. You received a CDBG grant for 250,000. Total with Robinson &amp; Sons, our contract, and Da Cox Administration contract, I didn't add those figures up there. Your local funds on that's going to be about, you already paid 25,000 a local, you got an additional 179,365 to pay from local. Your total match on that's about 205. And that's all the projects I'm aware of, unless there's something else I'm missing.
For the downtown revitalization, I just paid the 50, it was a little over 4,000 today, road check. thousand today, road check. That's only a thirty-two thousand dollar compliance grant.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I, while you was talking, I thought of something, I'm not sure what it is. There's one more out there somewhere, but I can't remember right now what it is, but it's not real significant, I don't think. Rodney, can you think of anything that he ain't got on?
I don't see if you're trying to play it or not. I can't type of any other.
I can't say it. It's hard to sound like, yeah.
When do we start this process on that second, third avenue? Been on, lobby cost is gonna up since then, right?
Yeah, you applied for that grant back in early two thousand ten. We awarded to you last fall, and we bid the project about a month ago, month and a half ago.
So I think that probably accounts for something in it.
It doesn't. An increase in fuel, increase in pipe. While the contractors were not needing work as bad, we only had three bids submitted on the project, which a year ago, we would've had ten, well, fifteen bids. Contractors are not needing work as bad as they were a year ago.
Okay, that's all the homework. Any comments by council on the project?
Only other thing I can think of is the water line relocation, but that's being refunded to us from the state if they, we did allow.
You might have to think about the.
Yeah, the state's put that project on hold for now. We initially started the design, the six WBA relocation, basically moved the utilities out of the way for the new bridge.
Oh, yeah.
We got about halfway done with the design, the state called and said, put that on hold for now. And what I heard is two thousand and thirteen, maybe, it'll be back on.
Okay.
I believe this is all off.
Thank you for your report. Next item on the work session is swimming pool. Can you give us any?
I'll give you the options that the ADA I came up with, and what the majority decided they would need to do with it.
Okay.
About three or four different options. One is leave it alone and do anything. Two, build a gym, another gym to accommodate, because we have to use the elementary school now. Three, open the pool back up, fix it and open it back up. And four, build batting cages in the shallow lane, which are underneath the existing gym, and do a splash pad on the outside parking lot area. And what the majority of the committee come up with is to build batting cages and do a splash pad. Would be their recommendation to do in the future, I guess you could say.
Batting cages and splash pad back there. Okay.
The reason that that.
That's on the top of the old pool, right?
Yeah, the reason with the batting cages is because you could use those year-round, because they would be underneath. And then the splash pad, of course, out where the deep end and the parking lot is now.
Okay. Any comments by anyone?
Hold on, could we get some cost estimates later before we come back and talk about this tomorrow?
Let's go look to him, because I don't know.
We go ahead and do it.
That sounds like a good option to me.
Yeah, there are some grants available for that, land water conservation funds, fifty feet grant. Not a lot of, you gotta put up a lot of mess money, but if you're gonna do the project, it's worth it.
And the, you know, the batting cages, that's what, I can tell you, that's not gonna cost a lot. That'll pay for itself too, I mean, they're not for you have a coin-operating thing, so that'll pay itself back, back, even if you've done the batting, built batting cages, that one baseball field, it'll pay itself back. The splash pad is one of the biggie costs.
And you can go, you can build a splash pad anywhere from a hundred thousand to half million, depending on what size and how many features you want.
We got about three books on splash pad equipment. You can make it nice, like we're talking about.
And you can, you know, the thing about, it's not just where the pool area is located, you can go out to the park, because there's plenty of parking. You got access to the steps from the, where the basketball court's up there, come right down to that area, so I mean, they're the large area that you can use there.
Well, those suggestions are good, and the, in U federal regulations on swimming pool, if we, of course, we'd have to go along with these regs, and it would be real expensive to open the old pool back up to meet their standards. Our pool now would not meet any of those standards, so.
We tried to come up with as many options as possible. Of course, that'd be a one on opening the pool back up, you know. We got the building, the gym is, I told you, there is a need for a gym, because we have to use someone else's, and that's what Winfield was doing with theirs. They feel theirs in, but they're taking donations to build a gym. And, but the majority, almost everyone, almost agreed with the majority.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Been asked to discuss the possibility of moving the council meetings from six to five-third. I have any comment on that?
I'm ready, but it don't make any difference.
Don't make any difference.
Don't bother.
Okay. We'll address that issue.
But I don't have a problem with keeping it the way it is.
We'll make a decision on that the next council meeting. Okay. Any questions from anybody, comment?
How about you guys, is it better for you all or?
All right. Well, thank you all for your input at the work session. I think we've had a good work session, and with that, I will end the work session. Thank you.